Got it. All right, everybody, welcome. We are here at a regular meeting of the Norwich Planning Commission. And we have full attendance, thank you very much. Full attendance and a full agenda, so let's get started. I would take a motion to approve an agenda and then we can discuss.
Move to.
Jeff moves, Chris seconds, any discussion of the agenda? All right. All those in favor? I raise anything? All right, we got an agenda, thank you. Public comment, do you have any public lurking off to the side of the picture that I can't see?
No.
Nobody. Nobody on Zoom, so the public cannot comment if they don't come, Ernie?
I just wanted to know if if there's been any any bites on the planning director zoning administrator, whatever we call them.
I will, I'll speak, I'll speak to that in a minute in my report. Yeah. There's a, is that a member of the public or are they lost?
Jonathan, hi Jonathan.
Planning.
Safety office. Start, so.
Privacy. You're welcome.
Regular planning commission meeting.
Planning commission that were. You guys are much too important.
We I'd say we take exception to that, but I won't.
Well, they're mad because I didn't show up tonight.
I see, that's that's you're not in person, I see. Okay, correspondence, we had a couple of things. One that is worth talking about a little bit. So there there's some supportive emails relative to the bike, the Route 5 bike corridor. I think everybody knows we we filled that out in sort of expressing our support and then answering specifically about on the survey question, so we we did the planning commission side of that, and I know that Marcia did it roughly the same for the select board, so those emails are are just in support of the same message that we gave. On the affordable housing proposal that we spoke about at the last meeting and then we approved submitting it to the select board. You can see in our packet my letter to the select board and then a copy of the proposal and that little site map thing that went to the select board. I saw conversation back and forth between Marcia and Jeff Lubel about what, when might the select board take it up and discuss it, they're looking for some they, the subcommittee is looking for some sense of the select board so they can say, okay, the select board's generally supportive, we will hold a public hearing, we will take more steps. That is not on the agenda for tomorrow's select board meeting. And then they're not meeting again until January. So Jeff intends to bring it up under correspondence. It is in their packet, my letter, so he will bring it up under correspondence with them. Anybody else who wants to to be there and and chime in? That is when it'll happen. I I can't imagine them giving it a great deal of time tomorrow, that's going to be after they go through and approve the budget. But that is, that's where that stands. So any comments on that topic?
Yes.
Stuart has his hand raised.
Yeah, Stuart?
You can't see me?
You just start talking, it should work.
Yeah, as soon as you start talking, it pans over. Just wave your hand if you're if you're not in the picture. Yeah.
There we go.
Anyway, the the wording, the wording of the approval that I voted for is is the wording as it came out was not what I really thought was going to happen. I expressed some reservations, some I what I thought were serious reservations regarding cost. But that was not part of what was transmitted to the select board. And maybe because I was a minority of one, maybe that wasn't necessary or appropriate, but I just, I just want to let you know that that I would have voted against that wording had I known exactly what the wording was to start with.
Okay, so we should, I mean, we can, we should check that in the certainly in the future and with with Vince taking minutes, but I would point out that the 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 thing that was voted on that I submitted to the select board has as the statement in it, one of the things that the Affordable Housing Subcommittee and PC will be involved in selectment, engagement and management of the project, including cost consideration. So I know that those last three words were put in there by Vince specifically to address the cost topic. So if if we need to be more clear as we're drafting motions that were approved and have Vince read them back, then fine, but I I thought there was a cost note in the motion. Jeff?
Okay, yeah, we tried to help, sorry.
Yeah, so in the minutes that we're looking at for eleven seven. I mean, I I didn't catch that, but I think Stu is right that he expressed concerns about costs that are not captured in our minutes, which is where that probably should have been, and I don't mean that good or bad.
Yeah, so the the challenge, one challenge was simply I'm working from draft minutes because I wrote that before we had a chance to approve the minutes, but I certainly would encourage anyone, you know, Stuart, if you if you want to you know, attend the select board meeting and chime in at the appropriate time, we can add whatever color we need to to the planning commission submission. And then I think.
Yeah, when I'm we're going to get to minutes in a bit. We're going to get to minutes in a bit so we can amend the minutes.
Yes.
And that can be the basis what Stu may say tomorrow.
Yes. Agreed. Okay, and then I would just Vince, we'll we'll just get in a in a more disciplined habit of especially if it's something like that where we're going to submit to the select board or it's a it's a very official motion. Then we'll have you read it back absolutely word for word before the vote and well, that's what we're voting on, that's what goes in the minutes and we'll tighten up on that, so.
Okay, I thought we were pretty accurate to what we decided, but I could see how it needed to be elaborated on with the other discussion going into it.
Yeah.
But I think the motion was accurate to what we voted on.
Okay, I thought I thought so too, but let's we'll we'll be we'll be careful. Okay, so that's that's all I had on correspondence. And we'll see how that goes tomorrow on the on the affordable housing side. So then on the chair report side, just a few little, a little things. Some nuts a little, but but just updates. On the use of the website for sharing information, I think that is is going to be a very valuable tool and we're using it specifically for the solar siting subcommittee. The meeting before we said, oh, the East Montpelier Plan or this this document from the Regional Commission would be really a valuable resource. And then I I send those to Pam, she puts links on the website and now all you have to do is point somebody to the website and we all can access that information. As I said, I don't know if I said it to this group, but I I spoke with Marcia about it, I spoke with Brennan about it. And both of them were completely supportive and, you know, Marcia made the comment that she hope more groups would do that. So there hasn't been any pushback at all on greater use of the website as a reference, as a place for reference. So I would encourage us to get him to wave. All right, just speak, speak up, I'm sorry. All right.
Who had his hand?
All right, still.
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to raise, and I don't know what what the appropriate time is, but I wanted to raise the issue of trying to get a Word copy of the town plan, we, there have been two requests that have been made. And I don't know what the appropriate, what we might want to do as an appropriate follow up to to try and encourage the town manager or whoever has access to it to give it to us.
Yeah, I'll I'll speak, I'll speak, I'll speak to that or the right places just in a minute or two when I'm talking about the maps, because the maps are a kind of a subset of that, so in in just a minute, we'll get to get to the right time to talk to that, Stu.
So one other thought, Jan, on that subject, and that is if it doesn't exist, there are people, I'm not one of them, there are people who have the software that will translate a PDF, which is what we do at, into a Word document. So that's that's another possibility, just FYI. Not that you didn't know what to be.
Yeah. Okay, we'll we'll come back to that in just a minute. On the staff hiring side, nothing, nothing exciting to report, unfortunately, we had, we we did a a round of advertising in various places, including the Valley News and and BCLT, I don't, we did not do the Free Press because that was expensive and didn't pull anything before. The official stated deadline for candidates to submit formal applications is this coming Friday. And up to now, we do not have any formal applications. And so I don't I'm not particularly optimistic that all of a sudden we're going to get around it in the last few days here, but I'm holding out judgment until the fifteenth. And so that at and very unfortunately, the you know, august member of our hiring group, Jack Kanden, is no longer with us, which is sad for many reasons and and also because he was a big help on that group. But we will, we will need to reconvene and and look at options depending on what happens as of Friday.
Can I just ask, sorry?
Go ahead, Chris.
I mean, is there a possibility, I don't know if somebody would actually know this. There's oftentimes professional associations. I don't know how aggressive the town is with searches. But is there a professional association that deals directly with planning directors? Here's just an example, I know Cheryl is a treasurer. There's a regional treasurers group association and they meet all the time. And they've got newsletters, they've got all kinds of people involved, has anybody ever advertised in a, if there is something like a professional.
Yeah, I I can't, I can't remember the specifics, but I know Pam and and Brennan were talking about it wasn't just VCL, VLCT, it was other trade, trade organizations and getting getting notices into those, so I don't know the specifics, but I know there was either discussion or activity on that front, I mean, I can, I can follow up on that, I don't know the specifics. But yes, that that is another, certainly an option to be pursued, Jeff?
Yeah, so Tom Yennerl was a retired town manager who's starting to help towns engage with hiring for public officials. I I believe he's a one man show, but he's really got boots on the ground and that might be a possibility as well.
What's what's that last name?
Yennerl, Y E N N E R E L L. He's been a town manager in various capacities, last Springfield with some interim stints. And I believe that he's currently assisting Heartland with hiring a town manager after the town discharged Dave Ormiston, who was a former interim manager here.
Oh, okay, all right, well, that's that's a potential resource too. Yeah, Stuart?
So I'm just wondering if anybody knows whether our pay scale, our pay scale that we're offering for this position is competitive with other places. I know that, for instance, when we talk about police and others, our pay scale is really substandard and way below when other towns are offering. So it may be helpful if anybody knows what our, what we're offering to comment on it.
I know that, so we talked about it some, the the budget for the coming year is ninety five. And that was certainly possible that they would go on either side of, that whether they could keep it under a hundred ninety five being the budget was was a little bit of the discussion, my understanding is that's pretty good, that's that's competitive. But, you know, I I think Jeff, we spoke some and and you were talking a lower number than that, but I I don't think it's too low, but Jeff? Go ahead.
Yeah, so for the private sector, that's a giant number. For the population, that's a giant number.
Sounds great.
So that's a, so that's generous, you're saying, and we're not in the same boat as as underfunding the the offer or the police.
Yeah, for for, well, for the private sector and population, we are overpaying folks other than police.
Yeah. Okay, so I mean, in this, in this case, that answers Stuart's question whether and what we should be doing with other employees is definitely a important topic for a different time. So that that's the update on that topic, I wish I had better news, but we will we will resuscitate that or look at it as soon as the fifteenth goes by, and I'm still hopeful that somebody may come out of the woodwork in this week. And then the next thing under this for the sort of my my updates. And I actually had a conversation, this is the mapping, getting our maps, we've had conversations, I know with with Chris in in the solar subcommittee about the need for the maps, like the Ridgeline map, to be GIS with the parcel information queryable, all, you know, in enter the twenty first century with our maps, especially the ones that are in the zoning bylaws and are needed as working tools for the DRB and us. And so I had a meeting with Pete Greg, Peter Gregory, Pete Fellows, and Kyle actually came too, which was helpful to talk about specifically taking the the content that is in what I would call the the maps of record that are referenced in the bylaws now. The the aquifer protection, ridgeline scenic, those six maps or whatever they are. Getting those into a format and accessible and available in GIS format and on a, on a with the parcel maps and everything. It was a very useful conversation just on that topic, and then we can expand it a little to the to other other pieces that we need, but the the first thing Pete Fellows said was what towns will typically do, and Thford does this, and and we can certainly talk to to other towns, is they will piggyback on the tax parcel interactive tool, so we have and and I looked at the, you know, the contractor, we we contract with M N E R M C to do that interactive map that's on the listers you get to from the Lister site on the website. And it has all the parcels and it's it's an, it's a a web portal to that information. What Thford and many other towns do is you just make an addendum to that same company or, you know, whoever does your parcel map for you. And they can then host on that same portal other layers, other, so that you could go on that portal and click Ridgeline zoning overlay and it would give you on top of the parcel map, the Ridgeline map. So that's logistically how a large number of towns in Vermont do it, they put those to to get a portal. And then the next tool that you need along with a portal is a PDF, you know, a printable, hey, we can make it a large scale printable file, which, as Pete described it, is you got to do the work to make it pretty, you got to sort of make the whole town and then put the legends in place and put the scales and and get it sort of PDF-able ready, which is a little bit of work, but that would then give you a a map that you can stick on the wall as another tool along with the portal. So this is all good learning that I had from talking with them. And then interestingly, that's kind of the mechanism of how to get the information out. The other interesting piece was that Pete, it sounds like Pete has a great deal of the content of the of the mapping. You know, he, as he put it, he's like, okay, if you contract with TROC to do this, to get the overlays ready to put into a portal. He go, he can go into his Norwich file and he's got, you know, he said, oh, I'll have to make sure that it matches the map of record, but I'm pretty sure I already have that. And then I can do the work to check that it is is matches that map and then put it into the portal format and then do the extra work to make it a pretty PDF. So I took, I took this all as as encouraging and valuable information. And I would like to continue forward with that, Ernie, I I sent a note to Cheryl and then I was going to ask you tonight the same question in terms of just for the listers feedback on that NIMREC or whatever you call it, that does your mapping portal, whether you're satisfied with them, whether they're a good contractor to deal with. You're muted.
When I worked with them ten years ago, I was very happy with them. I don't know how they are right now because the the way they they are organized has changed pretty dramatically. They did a good job, I thought, you know, ten years ago. They were easy to work with. And I thought the maps were were pretty accessible to us and to the public, so that was what we were mostly interested at the time. I mean, the 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 maps for for zoning are not they're not really accurate in terms of boundaries or anything like that. They never have been. They're 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 approximations. They're not, it's it's they, at least ten years ago, they were approximations. Not a huge, not far off, but I mean, for instance, just using my own piece of property as an example, my piece of property has basically somebody just took a piece of barbed wire and ran it a bunch of and that's on one side, but the other sides are geometric, but that one was just a monument line, a line of monuments, which is basically treated with barbed wire in them, so it wiggles like really badly. And they approximate that, they just put a straight line or a couple of straight lines on that boundary. So so you see a lot of inaccuracy, and for instance, we do have, for instance, a couple of pieces of land that are there's a dispute over what town they're in. Or at least part of them are in. So I don't know how mapping even resolves that problem. And that is a big problem too, that we're supposed to be trying to resolve right now. Before next day.
Jeff, did you have something? Go ahead.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, more than something, so if you look at the Lister site and you want to look up the span, the property card, you know, it's helpful. But when you look at the actual parcel components, the better site is Vermont Center for Geographic Information.
Yep.
Which shows a whole bunch of information for planning, yada, yada. And it's at the level that we really need to embrace. So we're talking apples and guacamole or something disparate like that. And from my perspective, if we had somebody like Pete Fellows who really understands both systems, a number of towns that we engage, that that my firm engages today says, okay, you submit a site plan, give us the AutoCAD digital boundary, topography, all of which can be inserted. The listers don't have the capacity to address that. Where VCGI is headed, and I'm not saying good or bad, is something that Pete could manage hypothetically, to integrate all of that for real site information. There are a number of deficiencies in what the listers show, like where's the deed, how do you get the deed? You know, the lockdown that still exists in Tracy Hall, it it's unnecessarily painful from my perspective. It would be great to have a system that could be managed by Two Rivers to integrate all of these components into a single database. That does not exist. Listers, VCI, they are not interconnected.
Yeah, I I asked it just second, Ernie, just to answer the question from talking with Pete, so there were two options that Pete brought up, one, and this is options for managing the portal that the interactive web portal that lets people look and adding overlays to it. So he said you can you can go to that same contractor that the listers use, it's 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 on top of what the listers are doing, and I don't know what capability that contractors has to do better than that, but that's one option. Then he said, if you have, if the person you hire is GIS savvy enough, if we have a GIS software and license, then part of that license would be the ability to manage a portal so that the that seat comes with the ability to have a portal locally managed. And then I asked Pete directly, I said, can Two Rivers host a portal? And he hemmed and hawed and said, well, technically maybe, but it's it's really hard because of licensing and and different, so he wasn't thrilled with the idea. It sounded like it was it was possible, but it would be, it would be a push. Ernie?
Yeah, I've had I've had that conversation, so I assume that I can respond since this is still part of the same stream.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I've had that conversation Two Rivers for some time. Two Rivers is well equipped to 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 do this. I think if the notion is that we want to hire a a planner that has this skill set, that's that's the wrong approach. To to be blunt, we need, we need a planner, a zoning administrator. I'm not going to say anything more than zoning administrator. We don't need someone with this skill set. Two Rivers has a skill set and they're capable. And we could, we can, we may contract with Two Rivers to facilitate that.
I can, I can wrap back around with, I mean, like I said, I asked him the direct question and got a a very much less than enthusiastic response, but I could, that was with Pete and Kyle and Peter Gregory. I can go one on one with Peter Gregory and see what happens if I push harder. Ernie?
Yeah, one of the things Jeff mentioned. Yeah. One of the things Jeff mentioned was the lockdown. And I I assume he means of the of the titles and and the stuff in the vault that that you have to manually search or at this point, you have to at least come into the town hall to search, you can't search it online, which almost every other jurisdiction has all that information online. We could ask, I I think that we should ask We could ask, I I think that we should ask in, for our purposes, we should ask the town clerk. To make that, put that stuff online, it's time to do it. And that makes it easy then for people like Two Rivers. Or or anyone else to access that information so that then when it comes time to stop mapping. You know how I said the maps are inaccurate? They could become accurate and they could be just a an overlay of the rest of the maps that we have instead of this approximation. That the only, the only purpose of the maps for the listeners is just so you get a rough idea of where places are. And and get a rough scale and stuff like that, those, the maps are are almost inconsequential as far as I can tell. I mean. I I in in the minister's office, I mean, I I I read the address, I know where the place is. You know, if I have to go and look, I go and look, I don't need those maps. And the only other thing they do is because the map, the the numbers are not very rationally assigned, I mean, because. But the lots are not broken up in a rational manner. They're just as as things happen, a computer could keep track of that easily. And the maps actually sometimes don't help that either, so what I'm saying is, is if we asked the town clerk to open up. Our records. It might make it easier for everybody to have all that information right there. And we won't have to somehow manually ship stuff to whoever we contract doing the maps with. And I agree with Jeff. You know, hiring somebody to do those maps is probably much easier than expecting somebody to. Come in with that particular skill, because if he spent a lot of time doing that skill, he might be. Deficient in others that are actually more important or to to doing the administration, all the the operations of that office.
Yep, did I, sorry Jeff, did I see Vince's hand before?
I just want to clarify the name of the company that that used the listers, that did the listers map.
It's N E M R C, like New England Municipality Resource Consultants or something like that.
Okay. Pronounced. It seems like these are.
Nemrec, yeah, I knew, I figured we'd call it Nemrec or something, that you're not gonna say that all 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 every time. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so. You know, in the old days. Five years ago. Show up at town hall. And they would look up deeds and other stuff in town. In our current lockdown status. If you don't have an appointment. You can't show up and look up a deed or a plan. So. I don't know how to say what I'm really trying to say nicely. This town seems to not want to disclose, you know, its records because of the lockdown that continues. So to Ernie's point, hey, look, if you don't want people to show up and review the records, there's no reason not to allow that. There's absolutely no, no health or public reason to have all the hordes emerge into Tracy Hall as they always have, which ain't gonna happen. Then like Ernie said, put that friggin' stuff online so we can look it up instead of going through the painful paradigm that currently exists.
I certainly don't know the whole situation, but I have sat through a couple of select board meetings where. Lily, the town clerk, has been advocating for putting as much stuff online as possible and getting.
Something different, on a day to day basis, we call the town, we say, can you look up this deed? They say, no, we can't give you deed information because it's liability, can I come over and look it up? No, you gotta schedule an appointment.
This is the town clerk's office?
Yeah, the town in Norwich is, this town hall is shut down. Unless you can find the little window in which you can schedule an appointment. The old, you know, years ago, five years ago. Staff would help look up deed info, like, you know, Bonnie and God forbid anybody else would help us look up deed information. That's all gone by the wayside.
All right, so that that's definitely news to me and I will follow up on that because I I have seen these conversations with where. Clearly there is advocacy from the town clerk to getting things online, but I don't know any of the rest of it, Ernie?
Well, there's, first of all, you have. An attorney, you have me, you have Jack, you have a number of attorneys. For whom this would make their lives so much easier. Doing, when they have to do real estate business in this town of any sort. What I'm looking at though is is that it would make Lily's job easier, make everybody in the town clerk's job easier. Like I said, it would give us a database that we can, we can, when we trust, the 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 reason we have. People have to come to the town hall at all is because it was a belief at one time that. The online systems weren't very secure, I don't know exactly what kind of havoc could be wreaked. On a town or on on the people, on the landowners, well, I have some ideas because the banks were really bad. And they were playing a lot of games. But putting things online or keeping them offline had no bearing on that, on those problems. That was a part of my practice, so I know that, don't even have to talk about it anymore. The point is, is that now things have moved on, there's better security. We got a town clerk that's that's advocating for it. I think, you know, if we advocate it for it too, and we have these other, we have another set of reasons, which is a good thing, I mean, we're not just. Saying, yeah, Lily's right, let's do it, but we got our own set of reasons, they have good technological reasons, you know. To put them online, then there's people outside who would probably appreciate it too and might get on the, the 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 bandwagon. But I just think it's, it's, it it should be put online and I think that if we give, if we bolster Lily, you know. More people getting on the bandwagon, the faster it'll happen, because it does cost a bit of money. How much, because the state actually wants you to do it. And like I said, it would make our, when it comes to making maps, all that data is now electronic. Would be electronic and the mapmakers would have it at their fingertips.
Yep. Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, Ian, this isn't a security issue because we have the hard files. So until, till everything's online like other towns. Just allow folks to come into Tracy Hall and do the research they need to do. This is.
I mean, I I understand, I understand that and and I don't, I mean, I don't. It's, that one is is a, is a different topic, I think, and that I'll. Check on with Lily when I'm talking about the other stuff, but but I I think I I definitely agree with Ernie where. If we can lend our weight to the effort to put it online, then then we should certainly do that.
Well, with all due respect, is the planning commission saying there's a health reason not to allow folks to come into the, you know, Tracy Hall to do research? Like they did five years ago and decades and decades before that?
All I'm saying is I don't think it's the planning commission's purview to.
Let's have the planning commission say, open the friggin' doors to Tracy Hall. Like we did years and years ago, five years ago. Let's get over ourselves.
I hear you, okay. I would like to, well, I I would like just this group, I'm I'm kind of giving an update. And this is good information on the, on the mapping side of things. What I would like to do is. Do a little more work between now and our next meeting. Talk to Two Rivers again, talk to Nemrec. Figure out what the, you know, whether we get a candidate in here that we can, depending what their skills are, but. Be able to come back to this group with a with a concrete, a more concrete proposal that says. Here's what we want to do for the next step of getting this set of maps. In digital useful form.
And, please ask why we can't open Tracy Hall up.
I will ask, I will definitely ask the question because that to me is is strange and unnecessary, so I will definitely ask. And say that the planning commission. Supports an open, open Tracy Hall. But is everybody? Good with me pursuing just the next step of probes into this mapping exercise to come back to you with a proposal in January?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I'm not quite sure, I know it's, it's got to do something with the state, but the E nine one one map, does anybody know? Who in the state oversees that whole mapping program?
I'm not sure who does, it's state, it's GIS, but I mean.
Already has all the parcels, they have all all the streets, they have all the topos. They have contours, they have everything. So if we're gonna collaborate with, it seems it might be worth finding out. Who?
I think.
Who manages E nine one one?
To to Jeff's point, the the Vermont GIS, you know, the GIS information that. It's all the same, it's all come, I mean, I asked Pete today, I was like, well, if it's. If it's in GIS format, it's all, you know, together, mergeable, viewable, he's like, yeah, 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 once, once. Anything that's done now is compatible with anything that is done now, you know, it's it's. There just aren't rogue things that don't match in GIS, so the E nine one one data will be. GIS compatible and anything we're trying to do will put in format and then it's. That's why it gets to these issues of managing a portal, the functionality of the portal and then creating printable. PDFs off of the same information, but I think E nine one one is another set of. Overlays essentially, that would be accessible once you're in that format. Stu?
Yeah, I I'd like to support what Jeff is saying. I mean. This is supposed to be an open society, the bedrock of democracy is transparency and availability. So if we don't meet that test. And clearly Norwich has set an abysmal standard for not meeting the test. We had a judge, and you've heard me say this before, but I'll say it one last time because it's relevant. We had a judge tell us that we have made a mockery, the judges were, not mine. We have made a mockery of the open meeting law. And to have a closed Tracy Hall is the wrong way to go, it shouldn't take another lawsuit that costs taxpayers a hundred grand. To get this opened up, so, thank you.
Yep, yep, I agree. So then, just to follow up, Stu, on your point, on in terms of the town plan request, and I haven't. I haven't. Probed this specifically, but I talked to Brennan a little bit about it on the side. Because it was on his list supposedly to to try and find a a Word doc or an editable doc. The short answer is that the the town plan, when it. And it reminded me when Pete was talking about making PDF printable. Well-formatted pages and so forth, the the final step of making the town plan document that is now a PDF. Was done in some Adobe page maker or or illustrator, you know, in a, in a program that allowed. The graphics and the texts to be. Put together in a, in an attractive fashion and then output as a PDF. So that, it it didn't go as as I would picture it, it from a Word doc to. To the, to the PDF that you see there. So in my, my understanding is that we have the PDF. We have. Then we, we can use, if we need a tool that is the text portion of that PDF. Then we should use the tools we have to simply say, you know, select this text, stick it in a, the converter and it'll spit out. That chapter's text into a Word doc, which I think Bob's figured out how to do. Jeff?
Yeah, so, Jan, the PDF is the dumbest version of anything we're gonna look at. I'm trying to be nice, so whatever Rod and Brandy Saxton, his partner, did. I don't care about the PDF, what I care about is the base data that is not available. And if we have an honesty broker, a source of integrity like Two Rivers, to manage the base data. Then we won't encounter what we've done, what we're now encountering. Given Rod's departure. So the issue is how do we maintain the base data so we can do whatever we want? Including generating the dumbest document that I can think of, which is a PDF.
Yep, well, and and I think the way I, and I'd like to, because we need to move on, but I'd like to say, what I want to do. Is follow up on Pete Fellows's statement about. That he has a fair bit of Norwich content. That he can pull out and look and say, oh yeah, that matches the, that map and that matches this. I want to follow up with him and see what that stuff is and get it.
That doesn't address anything that I just said, so it's factually true that the planning commission had some base data. That is not accessible. If we're gonna go forward and engage an honesty broker like Two Rivers to generate base data going forward, wonderful, but let's acknowledge the base data. Has been destroyed or otherwise eliminated from our system. So we gotta pick, we gotta pick a system going forward where we don't face the ludicrous nature of what we faced given Rod's departure. And I'm trying to be wicked nice.
I, I hear you and what I'm gonna take from that is. Going forward, we need to have a, a functioning system that does not let this happen again. And I'd like to, I'd like to leave it there because I want to get to the other stuff, but I, I hear you, Jeff, and I wanna, I wanna go forward. And I don't want to get stuck in that again. And I will see how for. TROC can help us on specific things. Okay? Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the Land Use Subcommittee. And as you may recall from our last meeting, we chose to pull this back into the full. Planning Commission. To try and help with some definition and charter and specificity of of projects or whatever. And also a membership question, so that's really the, the item on the table. I don't have a particular. Plan, I I open it up for discussion, I think, and and whether, you know. What do we need? What do, what do we need that might be called the Land Use Subcommittee? What might the projects be? I do, just to telegraph the Subcommittee report. From Solar Sighting. You know, we had a fairly specific charter, which was helpful. And then we're gonna come back with a, with a specific proposal of a project we want to work on. And I think that works as a sub, for a Subcommittee, to have a a nice focused. Charter and project. And so I asked the group, I put it on the table. What is that for the Land Use Subcommittee? So I would open it up. Maybe, I mean, just, you know, Bob. You were, you were, you know, Bob and Ernie, who were the, the people on that committee, and I don't know whether you, you have spoken. Prior to this, about this, but do you have thoughts on? What you were doing that said, hey, this is, this is the stuff we should be working on?
I I I sort of, at our first meeting in particular, sort of had the impression what we were supposed to be trying to work at was. How we're supposed to implement. The various laws and also upgrades, since we're gonna be. Get getting ready, basically doing what was necessary to get ready to start redrawing the regulations. The plant, the the zoning and and subdivision regulations and. That to me seems like. This, just the name, land use. You know, it's it's land use planning, land use. You know, that's, that's pretty much what that means and. It it's, how would we, how would we approach it and so on, at one point we were, we were thinking about. We we talked about redrawing, we redrafting the the town plan and, you know. That may still be a good way to go, simply looking at. What was in the packet today, for today. You know, there is some very specific and carefully thought out. Things that they said in almost every single section of the book, a section of the plan. And I think maybe that means we need to fix it. Maybe we just have to, you know. When it. I keep on having, trying to, um. Sort of make it clear that, you know, we don't need to redo everything all at once. You know, includes the town plan. I mean, we could, we could update it and update it and update it. Um, periodically, uh, I mean, um, there is a process that that it has to go through to. Become official and authorized. Um, after we, but. We could do that over the course of. You know, there's nothing saying you can't do that on an annual basis. Just tell the select board they're gonna approve it on an annual basis. Or biannual, I it, uh, yeah. Biannual is every two years, whatever. You know what I'm saying? I mean. There there are, there are things that are not clear in it that I I think there are that are not clear. Um. I think there are things that are not addressed that are supposed to belong in there. Some of that's my opinion and, you know, but but it clearly. Um. The person who wrote that that memo. Feels is there's stuff that's missing too. And and when I read it, it looked like there was kind of important stuff too. So. Uh, you know, so I think that's, that's, that's the sort of basic. Purview of what the land use. Um, somebody will do.
Okay, just just a second, Chris. I wanted to, cause I asked Bob and then I'll get, Bob, did you have any thoughts based on?
Uh, I'd say the more specificity, the better from the outset, uh, and if, I mean, like, like you said last week, uh. Just the general, uh. The general land use is sort of germane to the, uh, planning commission. At large, so, uh, um, i- if it was something, if we went in the. If it was desired to have a smaller group go specifically towards. Like, one thing that came up initially, I thought before we formed the group was the, uh. Uh, inconsistencies or shortcomings in the zoning regs that are causing problems to the Development Review Board. If that was like the. The. Charter from the air, the the, you know, from the outset, just. You know, address these particular things and sunset it after six months or whatever. Or likewise, uh, this, uh. Uh, and the the stuff in the packet, the specifics. Have some sort of draft ready for the next rewrite or or something along those lines. Uh, that. That would have value for a group and, uh, like you say, make it specific so they, so there's marching orders in place and you know what to do. Uh, I think we sort of, uh, just stumbled into a very general approach to things and, uh. So, uh, yes, it was unclear. Where we're going. So the the value I would say would be in having, having something specific. A task to.
Yep. Yep, thank you. Chris?
I agree.
Uh, no, I'm really glad you let Bob say that because that's what exactly I was gonna ask everybody. Um, I'm really glad. Bob said it because I was thinking land use is kind of like. It sounds like something the planning commission should do. As a whole, and so it did seem like a huge topic. Uh, so.
Mm hmm.
I I don't have to repeat my, I, I, Bob said it perfectly, you know, get get down to a more specific, like what we're doing with the solar sighting. Just come up with. With that.
The another one that, so I I agree, and I think that's what we're looking for. And just to. Point to the, we'll we'll get to it in the agenda, which is. The and the the three-page memo that's there, which was. Uh, it was Two Rivers. Exercise. When I talked to Peter Gregory about coming to visit us and talk about our town plan. He said, you know, kind of rolled up in the services you get, uh, being a member is, uh, that kind of a level of. Town plan review. And Kyle's the one that pulled it together, uh, but it was a Two Rivers, you know, sort of sit around the table, go through our plan and and comment. So. That, that's where that came from and it's, it is a useful thing to look at. We'll look at it in a minute. Um. The only, the other one, and this is. Slightly out of left field, but another idea I had thinking about it was. We have Thetford. Uh, that just did. Gotta be two years worth of work. To redo a set of draft bylaws and I was, I was, look, there was a, actually an article, I don't know, it was Valley News or somewhere. About the pocket neighborhood. Concept that they have put into the the bylaws and what that does to density and what it does to. Uh, ADUs and middle, middle housing and so forth, but. The the thing that I thought of was. We've got a, we've got a group. You know, five miles north of here that has put two years of work into looking into. Updating things. It's, it feels like a resource that we could tap into. And and, you know, make some connections into there and say, hey. Wha- what if, what did you notice with your bio? Why are you? Changing that whole section of your bylaws? What was the justification? What, what? And it's just a resource and essentially kind of a a project that I thought might be useful. Whether that's. Something, you know, I was planning to contact the. The planning commission chair in Thetford, but that's that there may be other avenues to to work with them. That may or may not make sense for land use subcommittee. Just a thought. Other ideas, thoughts on? A possible charter project specificity for this group? I think we're agreed that specificity would be helpful. Chris?
I I think, again, Bob was on the right track. There have been two things that we've been discussing. Um. The issues with the DRB. And that would be just a great, great way to just clean up. And let somebody work with them directly, see what's, see what's wrong, what's out of whack. And then language, we've been, I, I, you know. My understanding, if I'm correct on this, was that we're supposed to be changing the word. From shall to must. So I think, and I don't know if that verbiage was required by the state, but I mean, that's one thing where. Kind of see somebody needs to just go through and start looking at at language that that. Were required to change. But we, we, we ran across that with the, with the, um. With reading the PUC stuff. That you need to start changes in the language. So so to me, again.
Yeah, we certainly heard that it was, you know, you. You had a weak document if you had a lot of encourages and, uh, you know, words like that. Um. I do think it's, it's, it can be a policy statement. You have to be careful. You you don't just hit find and replace and say. Uh, replace every encourage with a must. Um, but, uh, to have a powerful, strong. Set of documents. You gotta get the language to. Be specific. Jeff?
Yeah, I completely disagree with what I just heard. So, um, I I get that there's nobody on this board that has permitting experience and Ernie, I'm gonna call you out. So if you're gonna do a planned residential development, and what does that mean? When you're gonna weigh facets of a site? If you say you shall, you must. Instead of you should consider. So right now, I'm not aware of DRB conflicts. If there are DRB conflicts, have the DRB present us with conflicts. Uh, this, this stuff about shall and must. Is in complete contrast to sustainable development. So what this town has tried to do is talk about how do we contemplate the actual site conditions and allow the DRB? And it's, you know, and and so I'm gonna say lay people to, since Jack is gone. How do we engage an applicant? And consider the elements that are being presented to the DRB? There is no shall, there is no must. So ludicrous stuff that, uh, and I'm gonna say it again, stuff like slope. Uh, you know, the the notion of a waiver, slope is ridiculous. So the question about slope is, have you maintained erosion and sediment control? If you have, then slope's a non-issue. So if you're gonna put another zoning overlay to this gated community, then then keep doing the slope thing. So so it's important that this commission actually learns what it's talking about, understands what it's talking about. And then engages accordingly. And I'd like to go through, you know, Kyle's memo. It 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 all pertain, I mean, I'll go, you know, paragraph by paragraph. This may not be the time, Jan, I'll concede that. But when I look at the elements of this. Are we as a planning commission actually gonna consider? Things like. Housing? What it, what it means, what the regulatory changes need to be to to contemplate housing? Are we gonna eliminate words like equity? What is, what does equity mean? Are we gonna consider all people? Are we just gonna say Hamas? And I'm not being facetious. So it would be nice to say, how do we engage all people in this community? Not exclude anyone regardless of whether they're Jewish or Christian or Islamic. Let's take a look at all people in an open. Context with respect to land use considerations. And the biggest issue in my mind is. How does your town plan relate to adjacent municipalities? And by the way, I have no problem if Norwich says, we don't care. Norwich can do that. The flip side is Norwich cares, what does it mean? I'm not judging anyone that says we don't care about adjacent municipalities, which is a key element like keys to the valley in this document from Two Rivers.
Mm hmm. Okay, so I do want to go over that document, uh, when we get to it on the agenda. Um. And I want to be, uh, you know, uh, I want to stick to the. To the program here. I do think to clarify, uh. The shall and must conversation, because I had a, uh. We've got a number of these in the solar sighting. Subcommittee where it is clearly the case. That for something like. A, um, if you want your. Scenic resources inventory to have any weight. With the PUC. You have to, it has to be specific and it has to be clear and. Uh, and not wishy washy. Now, that, that's different than, um. Thou shalt never build on a twenty-five percent slope. Or, you know, some, something that is not. Uh, is not targeted, is not. Uh, saying the right, uh, using the right metric to say, okay. We need to leave clearly, the DRB is there. For the purpose of adjudicating. The balancing act. That is necessary to to do this work. Well, you, you cannot write it up. You can't write up every possibility and put shells everywhere and be done. You have a body of humans that have to make a bot balancing act. So they have to have that flexibility and you can't, uh, take it away. I do think that what we've heard is. There are places where being as specific and as. Strong as possible. Is necessary. Ernie?
Um. Yeah, I was on the. The DRB for fifteen years since it was founded. Um. And we, we. What we were ca- cut coming up against. Very frequently. Were things that would say. Um. Uh, the, I'm just gonna pick one that I can kind of remember. It said a PUD shall be in the form of. You know, and with it is to keeping within, you know, customary formations of 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 of. Of the villages and stuff like that. Should be a hamlet formation sort of thing. Are 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 the, are are farmstead curtilage? Um. Um, in in, those were the two options. But then, and then. And then there would be in, and and then there would be other language that. Would be modifying that that would say to encourage the, we would have wishy washy language. Mixed in with. Mandatory language that would undo the mandatory language. And 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 create. Questions. You don't, you don't, you don't create a mandate and then say. But then there's, then you can change it if you want to, you know? Um, you just don't do that. You either have a mandate or you don't have a mandate. And that's the kind of language that we. Now, there's also something that I brought up, which is a matter of. Language, literally language, um. Which there's been a move throughout the government to just substitute some words where you say shall. They say shall is really lawyer-like and it, you know, the idea is to bring the language to the people. People understand the word must. They don't understand the word shall is, is in fact, wishy washy. It doesn't mean it's not as mandatory as people think it is. So they're saying from now on. In legislative. In regulatory language, you use the word must when you want a mandate. That's all. You know, if you don't want a mandate, there's other language you can use. You know, may is one word. That everyone understands, um, and it also the courts understand it, everyone. But the idea is to just have more clarity. I mean. You know, the, the, the DRB spent lots and lots of time trying to figure out what. The planning commission actually meant. You know, and you have people that will come and, you know, want to turn the regulations inside out because they see a, 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 a loophole. That may or may not have been intended. And it's not clear it was intended. That's the problem is the loopholes that we saw were frequently not intended. Um, and we would have to, and and we were always worried that here we are, we're supposedly sort of a quasi judicial body. Trying to, and and we have to set precedent. Because and what, we're not, that's not our job to set precedent. It was to just simply. See if something complies with the rules. That's all we were really had to do. And. We were always fighting with, you know, we were, our, our job kept on getting, having to be something else. And, you know, you have, you. Yeah, you had, you had actually a fairly heavy duty bunch of lawyers at one point on there. I mean, we had Watt Alexander and. And and Arlene Rotman and and a few, maybe. And a couple others. But the point is, is that. It's, it's not supposed to be that kind of a job. It's supposed to be so that anyone who wants to do the work and. You know, and the town. The select board chooses can do it. That's, that's all that's required. And and so that means the regulations have to be clear. That's all. There's a difference between clarity and and I think what Jeff is talking about. I mean, I don't think Jeff would object to clarity either. You know, you just have to know, you'd have to know what you want. What's gonna be mandatory and what's not gonna be mandatory. You know, the slopes don't have to be mandatory. They can be conditional. But. You gotta know what the conditions are too. You know, so that means the whole, that's why you have a planning commission. So you can discuss this. One person's not gonna, you know, one person might put the, this is, this is what I think now. And then the planning commission comes and says, no, because I think there's this set of conditions I gotta be, no, it shouldn't be mandatory because, you know, someone's gonna come in with. That's all the way it works. That's how, how it's getting written.
So Stuart and then I I want to go back to to Bob in a minute.
I've had his hand up, Jan, before Stuart.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I I I wanted to, Bob, and you can, uh, if this isn't what you were gonna talk to, I'll ask you this on top of it, which is, I know you had. Specific conversations with the DRB. Past and present members, uh, asking that question, what? What do they need? What, what are? Uh, either conflicts or problems or clarity that would help them? Um, and and I, you know. Can you summarize that? Uh, what you learned from those conversations?
Uh, yeah, I guess I was, what I was gonna say that there were, uh, specific questions, uh, that they thought there were. Uh, uh, some level of inconsistencies, but I mean, to to speak to what Jeff said, they, you know, it came up also that the, you know, this shouldn't be. Kind of overriding the judicial role that they, uh, especially with language that, you know, there, there is. There isn't complete, uh, absolutism to the language because they have a function to fulfill to balance the, uh. You know, what is desired and, you know, within the community and what people want to have, uh. That said, uh, maybe it's more of an education piece there, like. Flubs would come up, what overrides what, uh, uh, in in some of the requirements. When A- Arlene made the point, though, that given the amendments that have occurred, I I guess from her view, uh, you know, as judge, I guess, uh. The, it had been a long, a a number of rules had been, or. The regulations had been in place for quite a while with some amendments on top. Then and amendments on top of amendments that might. Uh, necessitate more of a. Like a Thetford style rewrite. So that's a bit more of a bigger project that she was advocating for, but, uh. But, yeah. So there's a little bit of difference of opinion among them, whether, whether things were clear or not, or whether that was what was required, but, yeah.
Mm hmm. Is that, uh, that was answering my question. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, no, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Stu?
Yeah, let me try and make a comment. In less than ten minutes. So, uh. I I think that you've identified a couple of things that are important to look at. The DRV certainly issues. Language. Issues. But I think that you're straying actually. From what the land use subcommittee ought to be doing. from what the land use subcommittee ought to be doing. And that is identifying the specific paragraphs in the town plan that relate to land use that need to be reviewed, perhaps changed, perhaps amplified, perhaps less, perhaps strengthened. So I just think, and I can see, having booted up the town plan from the internet, that you can easily do that even without having a copy of the town plan because you can cut and paste from, you can cut and paste from the town plan on the internet. But I think that's the direction that we need to go. We need to, if, if you're going to do a land use subcommittee, let's focus on what or which paragraphs, which sections need our attention. And we may or may not agree on that, but that's the direction I believe that we need to go in. That was less than 10 minutes.
Uh huh. So I'm hearing several specific or not so specific proposals for committee work, say, and you're right. We, we may have a DRB liaison subcommittee that is not, it's not the land use subcommittee, but it's a useful piece of work to do. And we do need to prioritize what we're doing. And I don't think we need, we can support say more than four subcommittees really, there just aren't enough of us. And if you count affordable housing as one. So part of what I'd ask the group is, is a priority call. If we look at some of these things and say, all right, there is clearly a, DRB is our customer. What do they need? It's the, the things that, that Bob was talking about. There is a, an exercise that'll roll into the, the town plan, basically a town plan review that looks at the current town plan and circles places that need attention for possible update or, or changing. And that may have a subset that's land use and maybe not, you know, it may be broader than that. The, the one that, that Kyle led from TROC was not limited to land use. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking for the feeling of people to say, okay, if, if we have to pick a, a relatively narrow focused activity for one more sub project here, what's most important? Jeff?
Yeah, I think Stu is right to talk about the town plan as, you know, sort of the guiding document. So what elements of the town plan would inform conflicts that I don't think exist with the DRB? And/or how, how they relate to what Kyle's presented? Because Kyle's presentation addresses exactly what Stu just said. For me personally, Ernie talks about attorneys on the DRB. It makes no sense to me. So we had plumbers, we had auto mechanics. Not a one of them had any land use experience. So I don't care what Arlene thought because she had no land use experience. I don't care what Ernie thought. Similarly, I don't care what Watt thought. They're attorneys. Who cares? So Jack was the first person that I can think of on the DRB that actually had land use experience. And, and I'm glad to be corrected. So what does land use mean? What does it mean to understand our regulations, both in town and at the state level? And here's the conflict, which isn't a bad thing. Our select board appoints labor board members who know nothing about what they're doing by and large. So the question is, how do we best inform and help? You know, labor, and I mean planning, I haven't had a single planning commission member that knows Jack about land use stuff for years. And I'm trying to be, trying to be very polite. So the, the broader question is, how does the town plan inform what we want to do? And then how do we inform our labor board members who absolutely know nothing about what we're trying to do?
Well, I think what I would emphasize in that or, or point to is.
Yon, one more thing. By the way, I want to take issue with one thing you said. The DRB is not our customer. The applicant is our customer.
Okay.
Yeah. Everyone applies for a permit, doesn't have to pay obeisance to the staff member who's, who's beating the crap out of them or the board that's beating the crap out of them. In fact, back to the days of Phil, and I'm going to say this at the risk of offending someone in this commission. Phil used to say to the applicant, here's what the rules say. How do I help you engage those rules? And we actually had public agencies that engage in that paradigm. After Phil, not so much.
Okay, so I, I think what, what I would add then to the conversation of, of enabling the DRB as the people who take these documents and do some, try to do something, and the applicant, I think neither of whom, if, if we assume that those two, both the DRB and the applicant are not going to be experts in land use regulation, planning and so forth, then that, that's the challenge. The challenge is to then write bylaws and subdivision regs and a plan that work for that audience and for that group that's going to use them. And so that gets to the question of going through those documents and saying, this doesn't, we, we can't write them for experts. Clearly, because we certainly don't, we're not going to have experts, we can't say we're going to have experts reading them. So I think that's part of the eye that we have to look at this stuff with is to say, does the average applicant or the average DRB member able to? I know Chris will look under a rock for the average Vermonter to answer these questions, but that's, that's kind of, that's the audience that we need to be able to help. But that said, I think what I would, what I would ask is maybe let's, let's park this for a minute and come back to the land use subcommittee question when we've rolled it into Kyle's, Kyle's memo. Because I think it's a good, that may help us come up with specific exercise. Chris?
Yon, I want to make one more comment. So I get where Jeff's going with this. We're all volunteers to try our best. But here's an example, Jeff. The PUC has decided to, you know, they have been the oversight to all solar, all renewables across the state, right? And about five years ago, they decided, okay, let's let the municipalities come in and, and have a say in this. And so now what's happened is as they're going through all the town regulations or whatever they can. If you look at their briefs, what the PUC is saying, and these are qualified people. I mean, and again, I'm sure you can come up with an argument to say that members of the PUC have issues too. But these are people who are saying tighten up your language. Tighten up your regulations because it becomes very difficult when you get into looking at briefs and discovery, et cetera, et cetera, that they want to see language that isn't ambiguous. They want to see it disambiguous. And I think the same thing that we have experienced in the solar siting committee work is going to apply throughout just regulations in general, whether it's development or if it's solar. So I'm just saying, the more you help anybody do their job, it includes things like language and specificity. And I'm glad Ernie brought up the PUC. I went to, I went through the environmental court because of the crappy language in Norwich. Not, not PUC, PUDs, sorry, did I say PUC? PUDs, the crappy language in, in the Norwich regulations. And I end up in court over that. So, you know, we might want to talk to some people who have had to go through the court system to find out how ambiguous our language can be.
I am first.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff then Ernie. I mean, Jeff then Stuart.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate what Chris just said. And I actually agree with tightening up language where it's appropriate. I have no desire to look at others' briefs. That said, that said, when we look at the whole solar paradigm, it is very narrow. I get it. So the broader question about when you have a parcel, what does it have? Is it, what are the slopes? What are the wetlands? What's the wildlife? What are the ag soils? No two, you know, I've done this for, you know, more than 15,000 projects. No two sites are the same.
Only 30 years.
Forty. So no two sites are the same. So all of that said, I agree with the notion of tightening up the language. So Norwich could say, no growth? Growth. What does it mean in either context? How do we tighten up the language accordingly?
Uh huh, okay. Stuart?
So, you know, as far as I can tell, there's only two people on this committee that have any real, real estate background. We know that Jeff has been doing this stuff for 40 years. I only did it for about 25 years. I wish I had a nickel for every time I went through Act 250 or went for a zoning permit. So as a major land use developer at Killington Ski Area, probably the biggest one. It just, you know, it is helpful to understand the regulations, both local, regardless of whether it's Killington or Waitsina, Vermont, where I live, or Norwich, and, and the state regulations. It's also very helpful to hires, to hire, and I never mentioned this before. It's going to be very helpful to hire a zoning administrator who respects the zoning laws as they exist in the town. We had a situation of 12 years of litigation, three visits to the Supreme Court, where the zoning administrator was found to have issued permits that he should not have issued. So we want to avoid that situation at all costs. There's no reason to get the town embroiled in a situation like that. But most, most importantly, I, I'm going to go back to what I said earlier, and that is, I think we need to look specifically at which areas we want to focus on for land use. You know, not every paragraph, not every portion of the town plan relates to that. Certainly there are many, many that do. But let's, let's either divide ourselves up, apportion it so that a group can, can suggest what we ought to be, be looking at so that we do not waste our time and spin our wheels.
Okay, let's.
Just a quick administrative question. Is there any reason why at this point? Because we've got a solar setting subcommittee, you've got the bike committee now.
Multi-modal, but yes.
We, and then we do that. Is there, just let's think out of the box for, for a quick question. So Stuart has just suggested there are certain paragraphs that need addressing. Is there any reason why each one of us can't sort of individually be tasked to take a paragraph and sort of work on it that way? Instead of feeling that we have to have committee meetings and we have to have agendas and all of that? So, you know, if somebody wants to take page 10 of the land use, cut out a paragraph and then just sort of write a essay on it or do whatever. I'm just wondering if we just need to keep working on in, in the committee, three committee format structure.
Yep, yep. I, I mean, I, I definitely think that's, we should talk about because we have, we have the subcommittee as a tool. We have the full planning commission as a tool. And then we clearly have individuals doing work as a tool at our disposal. So, so I, I would definitely agree with you and say, let's make sure to, to use the right tool for the job. And given all the open meetings and more in subcommittees and so forth, there's some real value to saying, you know, we're just going to count off the pages and, and have each person take a page and, and your homework for the next meeting is to circle things that have the word land use in them or, or could use some intention. It's a good idea. Jeff?
Yeah, Yon, I would suggest something similar but different, which is the RPC has to weigh in on our town plan and we've got a memo here. And so to the extent that each of us takes a look at the paragraphs here with respect to the town plan and says, you know, here's how we think this section of the town plan comportes or does not comport with these comments. I think that probably is the right paradigm to address this rather than go page by page.
Hmm. No, I think that's, that may be a very good suggestion. Why don't we, if, if everybody's all right with it, let's just juggle the, juggle the agenda a little bit so that we can keep going with this conversation. I want to have time to, to talk about the, the two other subcommittees for a minute and approve the minutes. But I think we can do another 10 minutes or so on this topic. So let's, let's do that by maybe start with, with what Jeff just suggested. So we have the three page document that Kyle pulled together, obviously talking with other people at TROC, which their, the request was essentially to go over our town plan and give it, give us their thoughts. And, and I think they took it also as kind of a specific thing to the enhanced energy plan delta, what might needed to, need to be done to be qualified for that. But so if we take that document as it came, what do people think about simply dividing it up? And having, having somebody take a paragraph and say, okay, I'm going to come back to the next meeting with expanded, you know, help the group understand that paragraph that they were referring to and what might they be saying and what do we think about it? Is that, do people think that's a worthwhile activity? I got a.
I agree.
I was just reading it again. Say, I'm sorry, Yon, could you just say it one more time?
Well, I'm just saying, so I'm looking at it. It, it's an, we could do it as a group right now. And it would be way too time consuming and it would be hard to, to know what we were, where we were going. But it's, it's quite specific and it's quite, you know, granular in the sense that they'll take, actually what they're, what they're doing is they're referring to VSA, specific VSA references and then linking it to our plan. And if I look, you know, I could almost count seven if I tried. That said, you know, as opposed to this, this VSA has to do the first one, educational vocational training activities. Okay, somebody sign up for that and come back to the next meeting and say, okay, here's the, here's the part of the town plan they're referring to. Here's a possible change that would make it in line with what they said. Here's why I don't think it matters and we shouldn't do anything about it. Basically become a little expert on that paragraph and, and come back and talk to us a little more rather than all, going through all of it.
You and I can add, and Ernie can incorporate 24, 4382A9. Because that's, we're talking about the energy plan. So that's at least one out of.
And that, right, so that block. And then there's also the energy plan criteria one at the end.
Yeah, so there's two here.
So two of them.
Is there any reason why you wouldn't suggest to the affordable housing committee to take on A10 or something? Or maybe, you know, pass it off to one of them?
Possibly. Jeff, what do you think?
Yeah, I would like to encourage each member of the planning commission to look at these sections and, and, you know, these paragraphs in the memo and offer thoughts relative to the town plan. I mean, I, I would go to, you know, the last paragraph, enhance energy plan criteria where it talks about equity. I've, I've got two daughters and, you know, I'm. I'm, you know, their age group in the thirties relates to a whole bunch of folks who can't afford to buy, uh, electric cars. They're horrified by trying to find stations where they have to plug in and sit there and be subject to criminal behavior. I, I mean, I, I, I am talking about in my life, probably thirty young women who are scared to death to stop and plug in in a place where there is no charging station. And by the way, for, for, I, I'm, I'm not going to address the lunacy of this current administration. There are no charging stations that accommodate the quick fill-up and on your way. I know a number of young women who are connected with a number of other young women. I know there's no equity for women anymore, right? Let's, let's just abandon women. So what does equity mean? Equity might mean in the energy plan, let's get back to a sane, rational energy policy where you don't have to expose yourself to criminality that's, that our nation is suffering right now.
Yeah, okay. I would, um, do we want to parse this out? Do people want to volunteer or do we want to kind of each, each look at this? I, I understand that we didn't have much context for this and it was in the packet. Uh, and so we're just looking at it now. So I think everybody uh, could dig into it more, uh, productively than us doing it all together. But let's, Ernie and then Stuart?
Yeah, I, I, the, the, the one that first caught my eye, even when I saw this this afternoon, I looked this over, was, um, C-four, four-three-oh-two-C-six. The second paragraph, the air quality and all that sort of stuff. And that's the one that I would really like to, to work on too.
Okay. Um, I think, I, you know, I would, I guess what I would propose is that we, we all take the homework to go through the whole thing in detail. Uh, and then please, uh, grab whatever it is that, uh, speaks to you the most directly and go a little deeper into that. Um, and then we'll be in a position, uh, next meeting to use it. I, I think this is, you know, this is one view into our town plan. It's, it's theoretically a, a qualified one, because it's the regional commission that knows and sees lots of town plans and knows the state regs and so forth. So it's a valuable view into our town plan. It's not the only one, obviously, but it's a valuable one. So let's give it, give it some attention and credence. Um, so that's, that's what I would propose. So definitely, you know, if, if Ernie grabs this, if, if the solar people want to dive into this, but we should all read through the whole thing quite carefully and refer back to the plan and, and give it some thought. Stuart?
So using the, uh, regional planning commission, there are suggestions as a guide. I think that, that has to be carefully examined before you go with that. I know there are some things that I strongly disagree with, and I think that the town has strongly disagreed with as well. So when they have suggested changing the rules regarding development near interstate exits, as they have, uh, I, I grow very suspicious of a, of a suggestion like that. Because throughout the state, throughout the state, that is a no-no. But for some strange reason, in Norwich, the regional planning commission is proposing that we redevelop or develop Route Five South near the Hartford line. And the town was adamantly opposed to that five years ago. You know, the suggestion made by the planning commission at the time was that, that we have development of, up to eight units per acre. And that was not met with any kind of favorable response. It was so unfavorable that, that the planning commission immediately took a powder. I mean, they just, they withdrew it because there were a hundred people that turned out in Tracy Hall who shot the thing down. They didn't want to see great development on Route Five South near the, near the interstate exit. And the strange part of that, as stated, was that you have throughout the state an actual prohibition that you don't develop near interstate exits. So I, I'm, I'm just viewing, I'm saying is, is take a close look at what the regional planning commission is proposing and decide whether you think it's in the town's interest.
Right, right. And I, yeah, I, I mean, I hear you, and I think that's what I'm asking for. I'm, I'm saying this is a, this is a, an educated view that comes with its own biases and background, and we can use it as such. We certainly aren't just going to swallow it and, and accept it. Um, but let's, let's use it as a, as a starting point for conversation. They took the time to write it up. I think it's worth looking at. Jeff, and then Chris?
I don't agree with, uh, Stu's representations, my dear friend Stu. Moving on, I think that as far as process, the planning commission has an obligation to present a town plan to the select board. And I've been involved long enough to, to, for the select board to say, no, uh, modifications, yada, yada. And in that paradigm, the regional planning commission by law has a role to offer its opinions. And so in that context, I'm just going to take the RPC at its word that, in accordance with its understanding of the law, th- these are its comments.
Right, right. Understood. I would agree. Okay. Chris?
So, I'm sorry, I, I have to, I'm, I'm pulling this up. So I, I, I actually really would like an example. Um, and I'm going to pick twenty-four VSA four-three-oh-two-C-eleven-D. And so this is a state statute saying accessory apartments within or attached to single-family residents which provide affordable housing, close proximity to cause special care, blah, blah, blah. Persons who have, okay, so there is the state statute, right? And I haven't taken the time to look at our regs to see what is listed under accessory dwellings or accessory apartments. But now they go through and they say, okay, this is, it's partially addressed uh, by saying accessory dwelling units are encouraged, speaking of language. Um, though the plan does not specify that they are allowed. And then, so they go on and they offer, well, you could add something like affordable accessory dwellings within or attached to single unit, blah, blah, blah. So I think what I want to ask you guys is, when you take, you have the state statute that, that, that they came up with. They look at the town plan or regs and say, okay, this is where we're deficient. And then they add, add their, you know, sentence of how they think it could be included with the, with the word encouraged, which is not certainly a must or a shall or anything else. But, um, I, I actually would like to get you guys, how do you see that? I know that they gave us some verbiage for, for what we could throw into either the town plan or the regulations, but when you look at something like that, I mean, isn't it sort of what we're going to have to do is look at our, in the town regs where it says under accessory dwellings, look at how it's actually stated and perhaps the town plan. I mean, I, I, I get the impression that they're only referring to the town plan, not our regs. So I'm not quite sure if we're supposed to look at both documents, and then how do we actually actualize that into a change? Without all of us saying, wow, I'm, I'm getting caught up in my words, sorry. Um, Jeff, you've been saying from the day we were, you know, put together, that you wanted to see more apartments and more changes in the downtown area. So isn't this sort of like, like, what are the big ones you want to address?
I, I, I mean, I, Chris, I think this is a great example. So our rules in the, in the Village versus VR District, two acre versus one acre zoning duplexes. So I, I don't, so, uh, if you pick one acre zoning duplex, so that means you get two units on one acre. Uh, uh, you know, two acre zoning is, uh, you know, two units on two acres. The main issue is wastewater. We have soils for wastewater. We have down, a downtown setting where the soils are good. And we've got a home that could accommodate more than one apartment. Our regulations don't allow multifamily uses. We don't allow multiple apartments in one setting. And so one of the good things, I think, are, uh, are, are, uh, former PC with Rod's help frankly, was to look at various zoning districts to contemplate the possibility of multifamily housing, uh, which, which is the intent of what this is saying. So here, here's the issue from my standpoint. If you've got soils that can accommodate, uh, multifamily housing hypothetically, why don't we allow? Because we don't.
Well, that's what I'm asking you is, how do we actually, you know, go?
Well, so, I mean, I think, Chris, it, it is, we're going to do it step by step in the sense that this is, this is a comment, the, the document we're looking at is a comment, comments on our plan. Uh, and, and so if, if it is saying, let's get uh, more specific about what we're encouraging, um, and, and how, what that looks like and why we want it to be, you want to be able to do this in proximity to these other things, those are town plan level guidance. And then it's got to get, to your point, then it has to be reflected in zoning bylaws, uh, you know, into the regs to carry, carry through with that, to follow through with the guidelines. To say, to Jeff's point, in this district, assuming you have, you meet septic criteria, you're allowed to have X number of units per, you know, per dwell, you know, you change the bylaws to allow higher density, uh, things within certain districts. So I think you, you go from a, a general guiding statement in the plan to something you can point out in the bylaws that actually makes that happen. And that's, that's what we want to do in, in, in various slices. Uh, this one being the ADU slice. So, uh, can we, I think we, I'd, I'd like to park it because I want to get to, uh, at least I know the solar committee wants to put something up on the table for five minutes at least. Um, so can we, can we take the, the homework to, this is not, this is not gospel. This is something that the regional commission put together. It's, it's, it's free. It's not quite, it was not free. So I was going to say, you get what you pay for, but, but this isn't free because we pay for membership. So it's a useful perspective. Let's use it. Let's dig into it and it'll be on the agenda for next meeting.
I know you want to.
Yeah. I did not freeze Chris intentionally.
To look at the whole document or pick one?
I would, I, I would like us to, I would like everybody to look at the whole document and then, uh, just to make sure that we've read through it, we've all read through it carefully. And then if you want to double back and say, oh, that one is the one that I'm going to dig into a little deeper, then please do. Uh, but I don't want you to just look at one paragraph and ignore the whole rest of it. I want us all to at least have it, uh, read through. Okay? All right, thank you. Um, does the, going to the subcommittees, uh, does the multimodal bike ped, uh, committee have anything to report for activity uh, other than what we did to get the Route Five South, uh, bike or Route Five Bike Path survey done?
Uh, no, we've still unsettled membership, but that's really the only other thing that we had planned on talking about.
Okay. Uh, so that's, I mean, I don't, that's fine. We can, you follow up and, and come to us, I think, you know, and we'll get to it. It's the same issue with the, sort of the charter and the value of specificity with the, um, with the land use subcommittee. Um, it would be good, part of what it would be good, it would be helpful, I think, for the, for the committee and for getting, you know, good work done, uh, is for you to come back to, to the whole group and say, okay, we're going to work on, you know, this corridor from Hartford or sidewalks or trail connection, whatever. Uh, come back with really, uh, what you, what your focus is going to be for the next six months. I think that, that's a useful request. So to that end, maybe I would say the solar siting committee, and I'd throw it over to Chris to uh, report on what we've been doing in our proposed project.
So just to, to wrap it up, we're, I think we've advanced to wanting to have the planning commission as a whole consider an enhanced, or, or talk to you guys about uh, an enhanced energy plan, see how, what the board thinks about that.
And I think to say it a little stronger, we, we, the subcommittee proposed that we take on the task to do the, to, to do the project of uh, creating, uh, making whatever changes we need to the energy component of the town plan to satisfy the requirements of an enhanced energy plan. So that the, the proposal to the, to the full commission is, would you, you know, bless the activity of the solar siting subcommittee to come back to this whole group at a, some later date with proposals to, to make us able to, to have an enhanced energy plan, and that it's, it's actually part of what's referenced in this TROC document. Would you agree with that statement, Chris?
Yeah, no, I just want to get the group's feedback. They could be totally against it, Jan.
Uh, Stuart answered yes, which reminds me, I'd like to get back to E-RAF at some point too.
What do you mean?
The flood, uh,
Okay.
By all means.
Okay.
Same with the flood stuff.
Okay, yeah, different, a, a different proposed project, but not a negative to our proposed project. Gotcha. Other thoughts on?
So what I want to know is everybody, i- if they have a really good understanding. Do we, we, you, you put it in the packet before that, um, the requirements of the enhanced energy plan or not? I can't remember. I thought you did to the whole.
We've had, yeah, we've had a fair amount of information on it, uh, in there. And there certainly, as people, you know, as, as we said at the beginning on the, uh, website, there, there are now a couple very good resources on the solar subcommittee section of the website. The one from the Wyndham Regional Commission has links to every town enhanced energy plan in the state, and there are dozens of them and various resources of people. And then the state has a checklist of here are the things. And clearly, Two Rivers is, is adept at this. So as Peter Gregory said, he doesn't see it as a big lift for us to get to that bar. And, um, all, basically all our neighbors have already done it. Um, and we'd rather have substantial difference than due consideration.
Right, yeah. Well, that's, we want to make sure that these guys understand what that, what that means. Go ahead, Vince.
Oh, I was just curious, is this expanding on the section of the town plan or is this a completely different document?
And it expands what's there.
Okay, so it'll still be part of, it's changing the part of the town plan relative to energy. Okay.
It will by necessity, because the enhanced energy plan has different requirements. And then the other thing you guys, I, I, Jan, I forgot, I, you know, all of our documents have gone to the, the portal. I don't know if you guys happen to have looked at it, but the PUC has taken one more step in their new regulations for five-zero-zero-one, um, two-four-eight reviews. And we're not certain how it's, what's, how, where it's going to land, but they are um, in the, in their new, uh, not regulate, is it considered, I guess it's considered regulation. Right, for net metering projects. they are suggesting no more than three acres of forest to be taken down. So it's going to change. If, if it goes through, and right now they're on their last leg. So no matter what, it's, our reg, our town plan and the regs are going to have to change accordingly. But it hasn't gone through yet.
Literally changes the definition of a preferred site. To say it's, it's only a preferred site if it does not include significant forest clearing. And then the definition section says significant forest clearing is more than three acres.
Yeah, but that's not the only thing that they've included. That was one of their big ones. There are other things.
Yeah, that, there are several other changes.
Mitigating, screening, a lot of things that are going to have to, you know, be adjusted accordingly.
Yeah, so I think Chris's point is based, and this is part of our overall town plan conversation, based, and this is part of what I asked Two Rivers to write their memo about, what has changed in state regs and, and other, you know, driving forces that has changed that make us out of step or needing to update our stuff? And clearly, these, this, the preferred sighting definition has, has or is very nearly changing. And we will be out of step with that and we will need to update just to come in alignment. Okay, so I, I think, Chris, we're going to take that as a, just a raucous encouragement for us to take on this project. So we, we will, you know, I think we talked about this some and we'll talk about it in our next meeting of kicking this off, but we're going to need to do, you know, we're going to need to publicize it. We're going to want to beat the bushes a little bit. Tell people we're doing it, tell people what it means. And get, get involvement. And I guess the other thing to put on the table for this group or to at least make you aware of, we are not planning to do anything more about formal membership. We, we have the three members of the PC that are on that Subcommittee. We have some fair, fairly regular attendees and some more intermittent attendees. But because, as Jeff put it before, that Subcommittee is just going to bring proposals to the full Planning Commission for votes. And so we are not going to bother to create formal membership and have six more municipal members and so forth. We're going to encourage people to participate and take ideas and have open conversations, but we're not going to do anything specific with membership, if that's, if that's acceptable to this group.
The only thing I got to point out, and you know, maybe these guys might chime in on this. We still haven't come up with how we're going to do our scenic resource inventory, how we're going to go around the town and do that. And like I said, you know, I've been putting some material that the VNR, not, yeah, no, the VNR, not the ANR. The VNR-C has put some great ideas together. There's an alliance on the western side of Vermont that has been helping towns do scenic inventories. And it's the way they've structured it. It's really great. But anyway, I put it all in that, it should be on the Planning Commission website. If you want to look at it, it's called the Toolbox. It's a great resource. But we're still going to have to come up with how we're going to gather as many folks in town to start identifying scenic resources and build up our inventory. So if you guys have, if you guys have some good ideas on how to get the community together without it being an OML. Ernie's concerned it's going to be a giant, oh, it's to be the largest open meeting law violation in the state of Vermont, you know?
Maybe that could just be our, our goal. Our, our metric of success is that we've managed to be the largest. All right. On that note, let's move to the minutes.
Move to approve.
You move to approve the minutes. All right. What do we have for comments on the minutes?
Bob's seconding. Comments, one typo, second page six. Last paragraph before motion passed. It says, Richard's move, second by Goodrich at the PC, submit the application. Get rid of the S.
Yeah, just one application.
Do we, the only thing I would ask, and I know Stuart's, Stuart's comment about cost, do we, do we need to change that last sentence? I mean, you could say including cost concerns or cost constraints or, or a, a stronger term there. I don't know whether that's necessary.
If you did that, you'd get my approval. Without it, without it, I am reluctant.
So Jan, it's fair to say under six, and I'm not speaking for Stu, that a second, second sentence could say, Richard's expressed concerns about costs relative to the entire paradigm, something like that.
Or the entire project?
Yeah.
I'm, I mean, I'm fine. That, that's accurate to the discussion in my mind. You got that, Vince?
Richard expressed concerns about costs, about cost overruns for the project?
I don't even think it's overruns. It, the, the, the cost associated with this, with this planning grant.
It says it was planning, okay. It's associated with planning grant, concerned. Sounds good.
Any other updates? Changes, typos? Thank you, Vince, for getting that. I know it's, because I do the solar sighting ones, I know that getting them done by Friday is, is always a challenge because you can't wait till Monday. So you can't do it over the weekend. And it always kills me because Wednesday, you don't want to think about it at all. So you completely leave it. By like Thursday at noon, you're like, shit, I have to do this by tomorrow. Yeah, I know. Yours are, we have more topics than ours do. So thank you. All right. Have we had enough for one night?
Guys, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Do I have any public? Sorry. Do I have any public?
The minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. Call the question on approving the minutes as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain. I was not there.
All right. Chris is abstaining. So noted. All right. Did any public sneak in that I can't see?
Not that we know of.
And I don't know when Amy dropped off, but I'll go ask her if she has any particular comments to make.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. I have a motion to adjourn. Anybody second?
Students.
All right. I'm going to call that question. Everybody? All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Happy holidays, by the way.
Oh, yeah. So I'm gonna, I would propose we're on regular meetings now. So that means second Tuesday in January. And the Solar Sighting Committee is going to go on either side of that. We have a few things on the agenda, but please send me any other thoughts.
Wait a minute, Jan, you're talking about us being on the, that first Tuesday, which puts us right over the New Year's? Probably not good.
Second, second Tuesday would be regular meeting for PC.
Right, and we're usually.
And then I don't think, yeah, I would not propose solar sighting before that.
So the third, third week.
Probably, yeah. Or we can, we can talk about it, but yeah.
Just, just be careful, Chris. Don't send it to me too early.